For those of you who have not been there, I'm Gary Green. I'm president of South Technical Community College here in Winston-Salem. Our panelists include Dr. Stan Gill, who is the director of CERL here. And I know those of you who were with us earlier today heard Stan launch this comment. We're also honored to have as a guest in our community, Dr. Bruce Novak from the University of Texas at Dallas. Dr. Novak, thank you for coming and thank you for being a part of this special day for us in education. Dr. Raymond Bouchard from the Wake Forest University's physician assistant school, which is here in the innovation quarter. And then Eric Grant from PA School is also there. Thank you for being here also. I'm going to start the panel by asking each of our panelists to make a comment and to get our discussion going about this link between STEM learning, K-12, post-secondary education, then into the job or career of education. Stan, how would you start?
Way back in the 90s, this time around I had a secretary, and he was like, he just used to work during his stipend, and we learned about A to superintendent. And he said that you grew up poor in the South, and he said, there are haves and have-nots. The haves are people who have money, the have-nots are those who didn't. And this is like the 90s, it's a pop-up, and it's important because in the future, he predicted, we're still going to have the haves and the have-nots. And the haves are going to be the children who have access to science, technology, engineering, that set of skills, and the have-nots are going to be those who don't. And I don't even think we had the acronym STEM at that time. But my issue is, who's in the pipeline? And how can we diversify the people in the pipeline? And how can we make sure that the kids who get in there, stay in, and are supported? Because I think that it's not a function of their capacity to perform, it's a function of our willingness to get them in there and support them so that they can enter this workforce as well. So although I'm at medical school, I spent 28 years of my career in the K-12, and so that's where I think we have the challenge in that.
I'm Bruce Novak, dean of our natural sciences and mathematics in Dallas. I've also spent a few years here at Fort Bragg, early 70s, 13 years at NC State as the department head of kidney studies. So if you're familiar with the state, it's terrific to have me back at this point. In my school, so our natural sciences and mathematics, in my school is the science and math education department. We don't have an education department on our campus. And Joe Farrar, Dr. Joe Farrar here, who we met earlier today, was under my office. This, I'm here today, I can't speak to the job as to what the post-secondary opportunities are, but I can speak very clearly to the students that are coming into university for the first time, first time freshman. And we have very big problems. Students come in with extraordinarily high SAT scores, but they're not problem solvers. They don't know how to critically maneuver through complex problems. They don't know how to communicate either in the written form or verbally. And this causes tremendous angst for everybody in the department. And so if we can make a contribution through these educational programs now, where we're getting sixth grade, eighth grade, this is the intervention timeframe that has to be focused on. Once I receive students at the freshman level, it is very, very difficult to change those habits that are formed early on. And I'll go on and link about this, but it's a big passion.
Thanks. I'm Eric Grant. I'm a product owner of a medical services firm, a local guy for members of SAV. I'm a senior chancellor of the students of doing social work in the low levels at the side of the PA. I went back to base school, I wanted to go to Wake Forest to work for us, and jumped into this thing called problem-based learning, which was the centerpiece of the first year of recruiting at Wake Forest. Honestly, barely remember the first three months of education because it was so dramatic different than what I had been doing before, with some job opportunities for secondary education. I joined that after that, realized the benefits of post-base and system, saw how it transforms behaviors, transforms a way of thinking about problems, takes a challenge or a concern to a potential failure, wins a chance to lose a community. That type of difference, obviously, not outcome-based, but creative-based, that's really what we need in the future providers, especially in that field where essentially that provider has to be impossible, increasingly shrinking, which is a big thing after that. So our students are coming in, jobs as a clinical director, a faculty director, helping shape their thinking processes around medical problems, their management of solve, sometimes not solve. What we notice most of the time, no actual arms, best usually not that they're ready for a fight, they want it to be answered by seven, seven, ten, ten, search, you have to slow down, break them, make them, make them show the power, because strong following is different, becoming outcome-based, and problem-based, especially when they have guns and a few names. So something that we have to do a lot, initially, because we're always trying to feedback the students, and they're separate, and you see their state, or their strengths, or their priorities, or whether you're in class or by any different status, and seeing the information. That's a lot of work, and we're going to go into both structures, these patients, and things like that, before we talk in part of a, we talk about a change of time. If these are coming, it's easy to download, you know, the parts of the course, and you're talking about. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Reed Roushard. Thanks for having us today. I grew up in rural South Carolina, the grandfather's were public school superintendents, so we had lots of, both military and arts, we had lots of order in our family. I married a wonderful veterinary teacher, and so we continue to all sit in our colored spaces and do exactly as the nurses describe. It's a wonderful life. I'm a professor again in the medical school and a chair of the Department of kidney studies, which is just next door. I'm delighted to have you here with the rest of the residents. Over the past year, I've also been in our clinical enterprise, our fellowship, working in workforce innovation, which is, which was an activity to really think about the shift in clinical care delivery from a fee-for-service model into more value-based delivery and risk and population health delivery. So we've been really thinking about how we draw from individuals' talents and how we shift our thinking and our problem-solving and our workforce, and also to think about how we invent new professions and new jobs to address some of the issues that our current workforce just isn't prepared to deal with, but it's going to be a necessary part of having successful integration to a value-based care model. I've just stepped into a new role. We were successfully able to garner some funds from the National Institutes of Health. And so a new role I'm in is leading a program for our translational workforce. And so that may be some of what I'm learning, colleagues here could translate as well. This is really about trying to do our employer base and our workforce as a learning, as a part of a learning system. As the problems become more complex and ambiguity is increasingly a part of our daily experience, the clarity of positions is no longer present, we have to tackle problems in collaborative fashions and in ways that allow us to leverage our talents and our analytical skills. And so we're working very closely to try to evolve our workforce. We have new jobs that have yet to be defined as we intend to be clinical care delivery. And I guess another real passion about how to run a very small world of hard at South Carolina is we are playing by now distribution of our healthcare providers in this state and in my state of South Carolina. So we've been working hard in the medical school to work on local solutions, to draw in, increase the capacity of these communities, to train students who have strong backgrounds in science and math. And then also to leverage their homegrown cultural competency, to train them and prepare them to continue to deliver those services in their communities. And I think this is an important part of what we have to think about, not just here in a beautiful facility like Wake Forest, but also how we partner the community and help build that capacity since we are becoming one area of great.
Thank you all. One of the things that struck me in our, seeing the learning that was going on, listening to the teachers, listening to some of the leaders that helped train, and Dr. Novak, I think you alluded to this, is that in both the K-12 environment and in the post-secondary environment, project-based learning, problem-based learning, are really driving students to, driving to problem solving. But that entails also a certain level of content, of content knowledge that's required. And I know from being in the classroom and from the experience of our faculty, of having enough content, of knowledge, to be an effective problem solver in a realistic environment, it seems to me one of the challenges is how do you get that balance? And how do you get enough, how do you get enough content knowledge when certainly technology and science, science and technology is expanding beyond what any of us can handle? How can we, how can we reach that balance of content knowledge that's needed for problem solving? Dr. Novak, I'll invite you to begin the discussion, but others would like to contribute to that.
Thank you. I think there's generational patterns in education. And I think what I've seen now are students that are coming into university where they have, we've allowed technology to leapfrog our ability to teach. So it was very technologically driven. And the product that we have now are students that are in the Google world answering questions. So pose a question, and their immediate reaction is not to think about the problem, it's to how fast can I get on my smartphone to Google the answer? And so absent from this whole process is their ability to think through, not even complex problems, but sometimes very simple problems. You can challenge them in ways that would surprise you. An algebra problem, for example, if these, and again, I'm talking about very bright students that we do, students that come in, not bugging our university, but the University of Texas at Dallas, we have the highest average SAT scores of any of our campuses, including the flagship at Austin. And we market ourselves as a technology school, a STEM school. And so we get very, very bright students. But they've been brought up in this generation that has been very reliant on technology. And when you start this, it looks pretty good, but now we're at a point that we start to see, I can bleed the downside. And problem and project-based learning is a way, and I truly believe this, of filling in that critical gap in the way people, in the way the students are going to approach problems in the future. We have the great examples here. I've never seen a more lively eighth-grade classroom. I mean, my classroom is so different from the experience that we share today, day and night difference. And so, but if you talk to the students, you find that they are really thinking about these problems, all right? But at the same time, they're learning mathematics, but it's critical thinking skills. And they're learning about scaling and all this. And if you have the opportunity to visit the eighth-grade one, where they were looking at the plots of land, and you also see, there was a poster that showed the calendar, sequential days, and right next to that was an example of the state efficiency test. I don't remember what you call it in North Carolina. And, but you could map the activities that were taking place in that classroom directly to the materials that are on the efficiency examination. I think this is an opportunity to fill a gap that we've been missing for a decade. It is one way to enhance our program.
Let's let our colleagues make their statements.
Let's ask the question. That is a hard question, because I think that students have been given program, at a level, kind of fixed amount of energy and time with the dedication of learning, there was always so much energy that they had. So we have to get this bank, but whether you're trying to do this memorizing something from a list of things, or if it's solving these types of problems, or this complexity and learning, as the learning, the attention to what you're trying to do, you've got to have the right type of instructor or kind of a nutrition specialist there to say, to the instructor, to have this, to be trying to accomplish these six hours or these two hours of good things. And then in this problem solving, you may have to sacrifice a little bit of content. We have to say, we can't learn all the rules, we can't learn all 75 things, 160 things, because better 15 are even kind of easier for you to learn on your own, only if it's up ahead. We're going to focus on these things while we're in this secondary, the structures, that we're in, the sessions. The PA program, these sessions, make those decisions intentionally about being the student to be able to discern this, 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 this. There are quite a lot of, it's all making a lot of this in study time. If you cut that into proficiency, we don't have to take up time for that, there's other ways to measure their effort, to make sure the time and instructor, the person, the expertise shown, the model, and the practice. So that's something, we have one year, we use, we can figure out, so we have a little less than 12 months, then we're ready to go out and act as a student, and we have some expectations and qualifications, specialations, and value innovations. So it's like this, it's, so we're in special pressure. That's it.
Very good question.
I joined the faculty program in 2010, and I come from a state institution in South Carolina. We had a very traditional period for regional program-specific accreditation. So we were, had a couple of years here for our, we were due for accreditation in the PA program. And I remember the day that the accreters did film science, it was in the summer, it was about 100 degrees, and the air-conditioned generator rode from the building, and it felt like it was 200 degrees, not this big of a space. And so we were already kind of worked up and sweating the natural anxiety of accreditation. And one of the questions that the side visitors asked early on was, I think they were looking for some way to execute their checklist, and so that we had this sort of sequence list of check. They couldn't understand how you could take basic sciences and application of clinical sciences, and physical exam maneuvers, and behavioral science dimensions, and integrate those in some way, and sort of fold them together. So they were looking for these discrete pool about components of content. And they, the accretors asked, I think, what in retrospect, you would have thought was a pretty stupid question, which was kind of this. And the faculty almost, you know, sort of lovingly, after two blessings hearts, almost assaulted him in the lecture. And they jumped on this piece, and the passion really was that, with some fundamental knowledge that folks can acquire, is within that space of having to learn to create a learning environment, their own learning environment, and then to facilitate, not only their own learning, but the learning of others, and to realize the talent and the intellectual pool, or the prerequisite knowledge of a group, in our case, of big students around the table, is infinitely higher than the prerequisite knowledge of any individual student. And so as they build that learning collaborative community, the powerful injection that that creates in that space, and so as they lead that learning environment, they can learn increasingly more than we can possibly have to live class, stack in an electric hall, and try to just sort of live. And so it is, it is sort of mysterious to me still, even though I've had a good five years of clearly our employer-based learning model and others that folks use here, but it is an incredibly powerful tool to build kinds of learning abilities and skills that are lifelong. Because I would tell you, if you walk in to see me and I'm caring for use a patient, absolutely did not know everything that I need to know to provide you in the last game. And that's terrible to say, but we've lost the ability to harness this much dynamic knowledge. But I've been taught to be able to harness that and to collaborate with others so that I can solve those problems and help to develop a plan that helps manage your health. And that's really, I think, in the clinical workforce, where we're moving.
If I could add something that is really near and dear to my part, is that when I was growing up, and even generations preceding that, really the post-school world, two generations, betting from, betting from the GI Bill, it's that, it's that the jobs in science and engineering and mathematics were a way for the working class to elevate themselves to a middle-class standard. And where I see a great failure in many areas is that we're not directing resources to the populations that really would benefit from those resources. I don't want to get into political debates about how money is delivered, but I think that has extraordinarily important point because it provides a step up to a much greater capacity to earn in a fruitful way.
It's been so long, I can't remember the question. Jill and I, I just, Jill and I were, we were, we just, last week, and they wanted something different, is that we want to sort of introduce this, and then they, Jill and I said, we're watching a different straight, a lesser, I don't know, they, they, Jill, it's huge, or one of us, here's Jill, and they were a little different, and he's, or the teacher was doing problem, I thought it went well, I was in there, teacher thought it went well, and women did the paper, and one of the instructional guys said, I didn't see any math today, and we don't have time to waste on the assessment, it's like, we give it as an auto, auto women, being an inquiry for a little bit more exam. And that's not the way it is. It's almost like, if you can envision a speech job, where you're going back, but it looks like you're going in the opposite direction, but you're just increasing your potential interview. So think about it, we teach math, and maybe they'll get it, and maybe they won't, but it's for a while. You learn it in order to do what, when you get the context, and you have it, and then now the teacher is responding to the students who asked for information, not the other person. I was saying, I have some behaviors in film teaching with a guy named John Shore from the media, and I'm happily recording, John turned to me and said, this is like watching paint dry. And I said, I know. But when I saw the day like that, I saw kids in games, I saw teachers facilitating, and this joke was saying, teaching and facilitating. So I think that people who don't understand methodology, they get some eye of the world. Every since we got in the testing and accountability unit, it's been ever, people are driven by performance, but sometimes the handles we're turning as hard as we can aren't connected to anything. They're not connected to performance. So we do really good at identifying the things we need to teach, but we're not so good at figuring out the level of compliment we're made, that we need to be imposing on Jill. So what happens is, they get to a test, and if they get it, then it's that same way, we call it, they're fine. And if they see anything that's out of that goal, they come back to you, go, Dr. Ring, you didn't have a call set, which means you didn't give us that assignment. So one of the, one of the things that Jill and I do much is help dispel that myth, that it's either this methodology or something else. Because if you're going to teach out there, you can't do that content. And we have content work jobs and projects, but the point is, why can't we do that? Why can't we connect them both in the same frame? Jill finally said, how long have you spent on these concepts? And the doc said, he's been this much time, he's had one fan meeting longer, he did that down this way, then it gets you to do yours. And obviously, they're looking at their scores, and their highest proficiency is 40%, and it goes all the way down to 19. And the only group that's growing are the HAG, which are the highly active, they're going to get there, and they didn't have more than what we've come up here to take, and they were at 95%. So the question is, what are we going to do for the other 20? We weren't giving, so I didn't say, but I wanted to say is, don't you think it's time to talk differently, something even different than what we did?
Thank you. I want to go back to something you said earlier, Dr. Bouchard. Part of your responsibility is workforce innovation. And it strikes me as somebody who's working in the community college round, that you're the first I've been looking for, because we've been trying to figure out where the workforce, where the workplace, where the skills involved are going to go. Obviously, there's no specific definition to that, but as we think about the role of STEM, K-12, post-secondary, ultimately to the workplace, to careers, what role do you have in your role in workforce innovation? How do you see the role of STEM education in a changing workforce, the changing jobs, even the changing jobs that may occur now in your healthcare, in the workplace, in those changes in jobs that you're looking to? What role do you see STEM education, the changes in STEM education occurring that I'll, if I notice that?
Well, I don't have all the answers, but I have maybe, maybe some thoughts I can try. I think, I think as I have spent the last year digging into our workforce, with, working a lot collectively with nursing and medicine and other professions, we've done a lot of sort of appreciative inquiry, kind of, just what's going really well, and try to understand what is predicted, successes, individuals are moved into areas that are new programs or environments where there's enormous method, I think, of uncertainty, and find out those individuals who just thrive in any of the area. And I think one of the things that we have discovered is the strength of their STEM education is an attribute, it's a predictor of their flexibility within a very dynamic, changing workforce. That's one. I think another is that, I'm not old enough to be cynical about this yet, or I'm working on it, but I've started to say things like, the back when I, which is, I think, an early sign, the electronic health record has many great attributes, but it's kind of a pain to take this once in a while as well. And so as I, as I think about sort of my own experience in that, even in my career, the amount of disruptive innovation that was incurred in healthcare and technology was just unbelievable. And so how do you have people that have a natural inclination to understand and embrace and even contribute to the utilization and optimization of design of those technologies, and to care for patients in a caring way, and not be put off course by the disruptive impact of education? And I would say the same is true of our teachers. There are some teachers that can embrace and understand the role of education technology, and there are some that just sort of deal with it because it's part of the job. But it's something magical, or something that happens, maybe as early as about fifth grade, and just some anecdotal observations about how a child's mind is and just some anecdotal observations about how a child's mind is set and how they move along and their, maybe their capacity for flexibility and very dynamic, of course, at least in healthcare, you notice. And I think what we do, we know that in those early years is more important actually than we even realize. We probably could invest earlier in this inquiry notion, strength of those core skills. And many of the problems we're trying to figure out today, this, this generation would need to understand the answer. We don't know what we don't know. We're, we're spending a lot of time also trying to think about how those early years of that problem solving complex environment. I gave one example, many others have thought. Imagine being in a room with a patient or family where, where a parent has a terminal illness or a child has a very serious developmental disorder. And think about the complexity of the illness, the complexity of socioeconomic and the social experiences in this room. And then think about how can a provider try to create the learning environment in that space? Through the grief, through the confusion, through the fear. And then have they been equipped to be able to master and coordinate their own learning in a way that they can now create it as a teacher? So the student becomes the teacher. And I think what we're seeing in the health workforce, particularly as a movement of population health, is we can't afford to have providers that aren't also exceptional teachers as, as well as exceptional learners. And I think that early STEM education is more closely linked to that capacity for teaching. We need a meshed learning environment for patients and families to be supported and empowered. And I'm not an expert, but I'm enough to know that.
One of the things that characterized, I think, every session today was the passion of those young people that they were doing. And what, of course, I have, and the governor asked this in his chair, is how do we keep that, how do we encourage that, support that, nurture that, keep that alive in the education process? How do, how do we, how do we take that, that passion that sixth graders have, that those eighth graders have? Ensure we have more of that, and there we saw those post-secondary students, those community college students, they could have been university students. How do, how do we build that? How do we keep that alive? I think that's, I think that's a key to take away. I don't know, which we should do, I must be able to follow that deep norm. Thank you.
I will reverse your question and say, one is we're living in a place because it's already present. Passion is there. And there's something about the way we can operate that takes that out that has kids be afraid of medicine, say, afraid to take a bit, so disconnected when they walk to their work. And so I think that their, their passion shows up naturally when we create an environment where they have an opportunity to connect and demonstrate. So I think the work we do is obvious. I don't think anything's happening for, for the women or children. But I do think that the further along they go, if we can have them see something, some hope, then their passion will move back. Now, in fifty-two, I have years on natural connection that is strong, connected to this community. And I remember, the place is built. The question was, well, we're going to make sure that the kids on the other side, they can do, have the same opportunities that was built as the kids up here. And so my question is, they have to be built. What can we do as engineers to make sure we have enough to do? So I, I think this matter, it's obvious. And I think we have to take building to nurture and keep them going.
Stan, I think we hit on something that is very important. And that's any systematic way that we, not intentionally, but begin to pick apart somebody's self-confidence and, and, and self-esteem. And, and we all go through harsh times in, in childhood and going into, into school is very difficult. For, for many students, and there's a lot of peer pressure associated with their experiences. We need to develop a culture where the, the students have been, not only, but we build their, their, their self-esteem, their ability to interact constructively with, with other individuals. They're very, very difficult challenges. And they're the hardest. These are very hard issues to deal with because there's always more simple answers. Let me turn quickly to a computer to find out what somebody else thinks. And then that becomes what I think. There are characteristics of good learners. There's patience. There are persistence issues. We were talking earlier today about the fact that when confronted with a tough problem, instead of the students working, naturally working through that, being trained to work through that, they would rather throw up their hands and, and give up. We, so there are characteristics that have to be built into our curriculum and our way of teaching that will allow self-esteem to flourish in the individual and to give them the confidence to go on. I do a number of, a number, a small number of outreach programs. Dr. Pan is here and she has been instrumental in bringing minority groups, low economic sections of the society to the campus and introducing STEM activities at the age of 12 or 14, along that line. And you see remarkable transitions over the week to the week and a half that we have the students with us. Because they find out that they are capable, just like everybody else. And if you allow an environment to prosper where students feel it's okay, then I don't know the answer. But I will find a way, because I've been taught this way by our educators, that I will proceed down a pathway that will be fruitful. And so, so, look, I think that we cannot lose the humanity associated with education in these days. We have to be inclusive. It's extraordinarily important that we don't chase the women away. We don't chase the minorities away from the STEM fields. And oh, we're so good at chasing women away. And it's just horrible to, to look at an engineering program. Because I'm a scientist, so I look at an engineering program, for example, and you don't see very few of them. So inclusiveness is going to be very important and really vulnerable with this generation. I have no idea what the question was there.
This is great. I'll just be brief because the comments, of course, are so, so good. But I think about organizing a curriculum. You know, especially having a small, cool team shop and the same customers coming back every day for a year. And that's a student coming back to their classroom every day for several months. So if you can leave the same shoes and belts and ties on the shelves every single day and expect them to be, ooh, look, it's the red tie again. And, you know, they're, they're hungry for creativity and endeavors, parts and challenges. But you can't go too far or experiment them, take their selves apart as you're saying, too hard. So that's been very thoughtful, shifting, thoughtful movement within the educational space to keep them challenged and a little unsure. But they can still see the other side of something, but to keep them hungry for that first step. But keep it the same for the whole, the short, attention span, the energy, but the, the social culture we're growing up in does not support that. So we have to respect how many of these people are, and how many of them settle to make sure that the priorities make sense for them. We've also seen studies, these are remarkable, that empathy of the provider goes down the longer you're in training. So for example, medical residents in, some medical school, four years, residence and previous years, fellowship, they have lost their empathy for their, a lot of time they're out. A school with two years, we lose a little bit of their state currently levels sometimes. Hopefully we can raise it in some programs. But it's, it's a natural thing. The longer you're there in the environment, the more the student, or the, which are not the way it happens, you start to do something.
Does anybody got a message?
We're, we're here in partnership to talk about STEM. Here comes another question to you. Last week, the University of North Carolina School for the Arts, now you're ready, we saw the new chancellor, Chancellor Bearden. Chancellor Bearden, his installation in the parks, said that there was something missing in STEM. And that was the aim, the arts that creates steam. Steam is creative energy. Steam is a powerful force. Let me ask you how in, in the, in the area of problem-solving teaching, we're creating our educational process with problem-solving skills, communication skills, the kinds of critical thinking skills. Step away from STEM just a minute. It was, it's a, well, with the arts of life, it's education and development.
Well, let me add one thing.
You got it.
A person that I admire greatly has a PhD in environmental engineering and a bachelor's degree in chemistry and a bachelor's degree in mathematics. And so this person carries with them this innate creativity that was first expressed in the arts and then carried on through into the more challenging STEM, STEM field. The, the arts play a very important role in inspiration, connecting what we do to arts is very important. I'll give two examples. We have, just this last year, this is one of the more difficult faculty services I've ever led, was to bring in an arts conservation faculty member that will work in partnership with Dallas Museum of Arts. And we needed somebody that was going to fit into a chemistry department with PhD-level research, train the students so they can pass qualified exams and all that. And at the same time, are going to have both an appreciation for the arts, identify all that's associated with restoration, care, you know, proactive, that nature. Very important to, to our culture. And we identified somebody. And I believe that this will be a very productive position. I think that the students are intrinsically drawn to beauty. And beauty is expressed in the arts. And so that is one connection that I find is going to be, it gives me great hope that we'll have a flourishing program associated with that. The second item, I do want to mention the importance of arts in the creative process. So we have, in the School of Arts and Humanities at my university, they started a arts and technology program. And this was a degree program that combined very specifically the arts and technology. And it became wildly successful. And I think just last year, we split it apart from arts and humanities to be a standalone school. A school is a college in, in our planet. A standalone school where it's opening its own faculty. These draw on engineers, they draw on computer scientists, they draw on the, on the people that have the intrinsic art characteristics. I don't have those characteristics, so I just look at these people as role models. The, and, and so they move hand in hand to these various problems, these various new endeavors that they can take on. The most obvious, I think, is, is computer gaming and things of that nature, virtual learning, three-dimensional visualization. These are topics that they work on. And this will have, this will provide, I believe, a viable future. So it really is a very important marriage between arts and sciences. And one can easily feed off of the other in, in a variety of different ways.
I can share a little bit about our program. I'm the son of a concert pianist and my mother is the most creative sort of, she just doesn't conform to any single structure, how would I describe it? In the most beautiful way. My father's a scientist. They just found each other. There's nothing about them that's remotely similar, other than their love for each other and sort of love. But I think so even from early childhood, my personal perspective was that, that art strengthens one's medical skills and science attitude. And also art is a, is a beautiful way to connect with others. It's a, it's a way to experience a subject rather than just gain knowledge. So in our program, where we have eighty percent women, in our profession, there's seventy percent women. I think it's one of the more accessible sort of science rich fields that has such human touch. I think what we found is that our humanities is one of our, one of our greatest secret weapons. Here, just speaking a little bit about it, we have an electric course called Sacred Seven where students paint and write poetry and write music and participate in, in, ready to be a part of a state production with a student here as they're highly engaged in humanities in the, in the patient narrative as a way to understand and contextualize the circumstances in which our patients and families live. We also use art as a teaching tool, not just because they enjoy it, but because we find it very useful. So I'll give you one example. When you think about the dermatological manifestation of disease, it's difficult with lots of different beautiful colors of skin and different ages to then describe with consistency how a legitimate rash or an injury may appear. And to do that in a way that somebody can understand by reading that narrative and chart how that is. And so we have to build their vernacular to describe these with texture and color. And so we sent them to one of the local museums in town, the Golden House, and they studied paintings and gave their vernacular work in this, the art and the historians so that they can then apply that language in the, in the search of patients. It's a short activity. It's very different from being in a lecture hall. But their ability to be successful and fruitful about it is so much deeper. And they absolutely love it. And then also sort of is a sort of point of, sort of connection. So I would say that the arts are rich, at least in our medical school. And I, I think that the more that we can do to leverage it as a teaching tool, but also it's because the students want it and it's a point of connection, it's a powerful motivator. But the last thing I would say is that the single best predictor of success in our VA program is security, is, is level of curiosity. And so I think, think a little bit about what Stan says, if we can do things that incentivize and encourage and promote curiosity. Curious child, there's really nothing they can't accomplish. And so I think that's really a connection.
So I wonder if they, that emotional experience highlights memory retention. So if we can add emotional experience, it's safe, controlled, dangerous for the person. But in emotional life, it's
But is emotional life experience learning, whether it's an achievement or it's given status to some degree of reflection, people will remember those things in their lives more accurately. If you remember your own emotional experiences, they probably still see the sunset on that day or day ahead. And so if the students can do the same thing, remember that same tool that can actually happen as a cycle, to help them with memory retention and process protection.
Okay, and we've got a few more minutes, we've got real opportunity here, uh, and that is, we have audience of our State Board of Education, uh, our policymakers for education in state, North Carolina. I'd like to invite each of you to suggest something, a policy line, that could enhance or enrich kinds of education we've been talking about, that, that, that might be, the comments might be of value to, to, to.
What I would do is twist that just a little bit. I, I think that I would do a great job with policy, and, uh, I think that quite often schools and school districts talk. So my question would be to the district, what policies do you, do you have in place to support this type of learning, uh, this type of management tool? What policies are in place that are preventing this? And I think what happens in schools is we have practices, and the practice could be good for the personal things, but then the practice leaves. So I would, I would suggest that we, public schools and districts establish a set of policies that you guys are, so that there's consistency all the way down. That's my thought.
I think I've already mentioned, uh, a policy point, and that is the distribution of funds to various school districts. We see it in Dallas, if you're in Dallas ISD, it's one experience. If you go up to Plano, four miles away, it's a very different experience than you have. And that's economically extraordinarily important if we are going to enable our, our low-income, more, uh, population to be able to, to, to.
This is time, this kind of stuff, this is just anything. So, uh, I think it'd be wonderful, wonderful if we could humanize this in residence and process, and if we could, we've got more, we've got more, some of the observations that become part of the measurement process, not simply that we're all using our level of interestness, that we can see this, not judgmental way of testing. If we could humanize it, and, 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 next spring, maybe back into the STEM process, the control process, and those, and the types of students that are so used to not being watched, or, 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 or,
I think that comment is similar, Professor Grant, I think, uh, I was thinking also about assessment, having a wife as a kindergarten teacher, through the childhood, um, the anxiety from her and her students and families around her, it's been really important, but also it did, but it was a, it was a level of anxiety that I observed, and it seemed unproductive at times. And I don't know if this was just my career into it, it's like school taught me my character, I mean, I got some from church, I got some from family, but it was really the time that us little teachers in public schools that, that really probably shaped a good part of my character. If there is a way for us to assess children, their ability to be collaborative, to be mindful, and to be, um, supportive of others, and to integrate that kind of humanistic assessment, the non-cognitive attributes, as we also assess the cognitive, I think what we'll do is not only put confidence in our ability to support them, uh, to, to change our approach to teaching them in a way that they'll be more successful, but also do things like confer, confer citizenship, leadership, to foster a generation of future teachers. So how about again, add the elements of non-cognitive assessment into our, in our routines?
We've spent the afternoon today in innovation quarter, and I am confident that, that we have seen and experienced real innovation. And when we started off at, at lunch, Dr. Donaldson talked about, uh, the innovation, it's, it's a new, new innovation quarter here. It's, it's translating an idea, a discovery, an asset into goods or services that has value for which people would require or use to benefit. About innovation, about innovation in the educational system, that passion that those young people show, that expertise that those teachers show, the, the, the level of knowledge that, that our community college students show, um, not far, not far out of that spectrum, uh, in terms of their education process, the kinds of innovation, and the kinds of use of technology that show in post-secondary, uh, and, and then hopefully talk some about that workforce innovation, career innovation that comes along with the kinds of learning that is required in this, in this, in this. So I will thank you, and this is special, uh, for the really thoughtful consideration that the marks and comments that you made, to do this conversation, very thank you all very much, and thank you.